Good evening. This is the Carver Planning Board meeting of March 4th, 2014. At 7 o'clock, we're downstairs tonight. If we could please stand to salute the flag, please. Thank you. All right. Under new business tonight, we have a sign permit for Morse Engineering, North Main Street.
Mr. Allegreen is here. I will plug Morse Engineering. They just moved in to Chumontela, which is next to Aubuchon. Kathy and I went to the open house. It's a great place. That plaza is now full, so we're very happy about that.
What I proposed is an 84 by 36 sign for the building and a 10-inch by 78-inch sign for the marquee out front. PVC, we'll use a PVC material that won't rot, crack, chip, and a printed eliminated vinyl print for the permit.
Nice looking sign, Peter.
Thank you.
Do you miss the chair? What's the square footage?
I did. It's supposed to be 16. It's 21.
21.
But we're going to be replacing a sign that was existing up there that was significantly larger.
Very good, Peter. Now we're talking.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, was this grandfathered in?
Oh, yeah, that's...
Is this one going to be grandfathered in?
Well, I think Peter's going to make the case that the size of the sign is pre-existing.
That's on Carver's new building, Carver Appliance. I just wanted to give you a little bit of close-up, but this is their old building. And if you look, Cali's Tannen Salon is also there, and he was grandfathered from Tubbs and Tan, but look at the size difference.
He's grandfathered as well.
But look at the size difference. If he was grandfathered, he put a much, much bigger sign up than what was there without a special permit. So I would argue, why couldn't my client fall under the grandfather of Carver Appliance when it's significantly smaller?
I'm wondering, through you, Mr. Chair, if when they redid this plaza, when they redid the marquee out front, let me start, start again, the marquee out front, that we set the sizes then. I can't remember how long ago that was.
That was before me.
Before my time.
It was.
I don't think so.
The only one, Hydroponics came in front of you, and Aubuchon's. Aubuchon's was through the grandfathering because they replaced the exact square foot, and Hydroponics is 16 square feet. I know what you're saying, Will.
Actually, Aubuchon did not do the same square foot because Aubuchon has another sign on...
It's smaller.
No, it's actually, they put an additional sign on the end of it. They have a Benjamin Moore paint on the end of their sign.
If I may, I could say, when did Cali, Cali's never came in front of us?
I've never seen Cali. I assume that's been there since me. You know, you get into the, you know, I know what Peter's saying. I think he has a case here. It's up to you. I don't recall any package of signs.
The proposed marquee sign is exactly what's up there with everyone else's.
Yeah, that one's fine.
So Dunkin' Donuts, or Aubuchon, or they all have the same size on the marquee, on the existing marquee.
It's just the one that's going to be on the building is...
The one that we're proposing on the building is a touch bigger than what the bylaw would allow, but I'm asking you to cover me under what was the Carver Appliance grandfather because the Carver Appliance sign is huge.
So this is going to be smaller than what's shown here as the old Carver Appliance?
It is. It's going to be significantly smaller. That's probably, each one of those letters on Carver Appliance are probably, let's say, five square feet, count them up, Bruce.
Mr. Chair, thank... For some reason, I thought we redid this, and I can't remember when, unfortunately, but I could have sworn when we redid the front marquee, we had looked at all of the signage, and it was the previous landlord, I think, came in. What was his name?
It was KGI.
KGI.
They, I can tell you through the chair that they did come in for a special permit for the lease sign, but...
I remember that.
I don't recall anything like that, Will. It might have been before me. I thought he was giving hints on it.
First thing, if it's not considered grandfathered, then it's against our bylaw per square footage, which would require a special permit, so...
Which goes back to that absorbent fee of $700. We got to bring...
Totally understand. You know, the fees are the fees, and, you know, if it's grandfathered, that's a different story. I wish I had known if we had, you know, something keeps bothering me that's saying that we did that. So, I mean, if it's the, if the will of this board would like to approve it, I wouldn't have a problem with that because something's telling me that if we go back and dig through the attic, we're going to find something.
Besides the fact it may be grandfathered just by that size, so that's...
Yeah, I mean, it's smaller than what was existing there previously. It's a nice-looking sign. It's a new business in town. The plaza looks great. They've invested quite a bit of money in the plaza and, you know, the outbuilding and stuff like that, so it's a nice, signs by design, those are quality installations, so we're not worried about that end of it. I mean, I don't, if it's the will of the board, I don't have a problem with that, and I would, I would advise, I would be in favor of doing that, approving it the way that it's done. I feel that confident that we had looked at that before. I just can't remember when. I wish I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Rosemarie.
There's not going to be lighting up there.
No, there's no proposed lighting on the side.
I don't have a problem to let it get grandfathered in.
Pete, how are you doing?
It is a nice-looking sign.
Galvanized deck screws with decorative caps on them. Chad, it's half-inch PVC.
Yeah.
Half or three-quarter. I don't remember what we proposed.
I guess if the sign was any smaller, it would kind of get lost amongst all these other signs on the businesses.
Yeah.
We're not talking that much bigger square footage either, but I got to tell you, something's telling me that we did this before, and I don't know why. It's just popping in my head now, but it's, it is.
Well, I think in this particular case, I don't think I would have an objection.
Do you have the original down there?
The application?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve the sign for Morse Engineering as presented to us. The only conditions would be a building permit if needed.
Thank you. We didn't need lighting, by the way.
That's good to know, though.
Yeah.
Building permit if needed and no lighting. And also, the total square foot is what, Peter?
21.
Not to exceed 21 square foot.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Beautiful sign. It's good to see you, Peter.
Thank you. You guys can have those. Put them in your recycle bin. Thanks. Have a great night.
Peter, before you run away, that sign you guys did on Main Street there at that plaza...
66 Main?
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. It looks really, really nice.
It looks really nice.
Got to make a couple improvements on it in the spring, just some painting and that kind of stuff. We're just waiting for the weather to break.
It looks great.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, and a new business, B, discussion of possible endorsement of AD Makepeace Forma Federal Road.
Counsel, Council Serke is here, but I had a phone conversation with Jim Kane from Makepeace and with Stacy Minahan from Beals and Thomas about not endorsing it at this time, and they'd like to postpone that, but I'll let Mr. Counsel talk.
Good evening, Richard Serke, for the record, for AD Makepeace Company.
Good evening, Attorney Serke. How are you?
Nice to see you. I did not realize when I left my office and came here that it was the wish of AD Makepeace Company to delay the endorsement until your next meeting two weeks hence. You have a letter waiving the 21-day time period within which the board has to act. Otherwise, it would be constructively approved. I have no problem with the waiver that was submitted. It is effectual. It protects you, and so I'd ask that I come back in two weeks when Makepeace is ready to have you endorse the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the waiver from AD Makepeace for the 21-day period on the Federal Road A and I.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Good to see you.
Should we go on to the town meeting articles or go to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, under old business, we have a 7:15 public hearing, Anthony Alange, special permit dwelling unit above commercial on 40 North Main Street.
You might want to read the public hearing notice or waive it, one or the other. Waive the reading.
Well, let's see. All right, we'll read it. Public hearing notice, accordance with the provision of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 4th, 2014, at 7:15 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, on the application of Anthony Alange requesting a special permit to pursue intersections 2230, 2270, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 40 North Main Street in Carver, Mass. to allow two additional accessory dwellings above a commercial development. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mankachir. Carver reporter published date February 14th and February 21st, 2014. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Come up and...
I've got some stuff after they present.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Metcalf. I'm the architect. I'm here with Anthony Alange. Sure, have you familiar with his property on North Main Street? What Anthony is looking to do, he has three buildings, as you're familiar with. We're looking at Building B in the center. Currently, he has a commercial space, which is an attorney's office, which is Suite 5 and 6. 5 is on one side, 6 is on the other. That has since gotten to be a vacant space, so he would like to see if he couldn't put two dwelling units there on the second floor. Couple of things to note on the plan. I think we gave copies, but looking at the parking analysis, Anthony has 66 spaces on his property at the moment. The two dwelling units, actually, there's one parking space per, which was significantly less than the attorney's office. I think it was like 4.7 originally, and now there's two, so we've reduced the number of parking spaces required for the property. It's 53.7, and he has 66 parking spaces. The other thing we looked at was from a sewage standpoint, there was a letter in your packet to Mr. Robert Tinkham, prepared by Mark Flaherty. He's an engineer as well, and in his letter essentially says that the existing septic system for Building B is serviced by a 2,000-gallon septic tank and 1440 leaching trench system consisting of four trenches with a design capacity of 1,065. And he says that it's adequate to accommodate the proposed conversion of the commercial space to residential units. And then the page directly after that, when we were here a couple of years ago for the connection between two of the buildings, Mr. Nichols provided the existing sewage flow calculations on the left-hand side. They're dated 23rd of November. And as you can see, partway down under Building B, the second floor of attorney's office, units 5 and 6. And then, as you look to your right, under Building B, unit 5 and 6, we're proposing 110 gallons per day for each of those one-bedroom units. And if you look at the totals, when Nichols first did it in 2009, the total flow was 3,035. And to date with both vacancies and these two proposed residential units, the actual flow is less at 2,0649. So it's less of an impact to the site as well for these two residential units. Just again, a couple of things on the plan. Mr. Hunter was looking for us to designate the two, the location where they are on the second floor, and also to propose the two parking spaces which are right out front. And I think that's essentially it.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, we did distribute these plans to the fire department, the building commissioner, and the Board of Health. There were no comments from Board of Health, I mean, from the fire department or the building department, but you'll see a series of letters, which Mr. Metcalf really outlined. The Board of Health did have some issues. He wanted some proof about septic capacity, and that's really in the first letter. Mr. Flaherty addressed that, and then I think the important letters from the Board of Health agent dated February 28th, where he has come to an agreement on Building B and its septic capacity. But if you see in the italics, he says, "However, the applicant should keep in mind that the type of business further allowed on the first floor may affect the septic capacities as the building as we look forward. Any proposed business for this building should be looked at by the Board of Health for septic adequacy." In other words, if he gets a big user on that first floor, he might not be able to put it in there. Because he, and this whole building, and Anthony knows this, and so does Jeff, that all three of these are really close to the capacity, and the Board of Health is very concerned about that. So if you approve this eventually, I think the condition should be in there such as that. Also, I think there should be, he's asking for a Title V inspection. I think that should be in there as well. And then, you know, if the units are permitted and the town will have to enter into some kind of deed restriction, and I think that probably should be a third condition if you so approve, that they enter into a deed restriction agreement with the Board of Health. Anthony has agreed to do that in the past, and the Board of Health is very concerned about these flow limits, and I think that's proven. Other than that, you know, we've been down this road many times, and you're going to have another hearing next in two weeks about Carver Square. It's kind of the direction we're going. I don't blame them. Wants to keep it occupied. I think it's good use. There's a big rental market in town.
There is, yeah.
Keeps it more vibrant.
Now, can the septic system be expanded if need be? If somewhere down the line, you find that the use is going to have the, the septic system will have to be increased, can that be done, or is that restricted?
We've been decreasing since the property was taken over. As the years go by, as you see the progress we've been doing on the property, we're trying to cut back. Every project that we do, we try to cut back, all of it. We even installed a tight tank, the air salon. And I think the way I go on right now is, as you viewed before, that, you know, we're trying to do some other direction to curb that because it's not feasible even to keep it there. And there, we hear the written down, they got 400 gallons of water for two chairs. So if you put one somewhat resident in there, it'd be 110. That's over 300 savings, just that one unit. The numbers can work. It's going to take time, and we've been working on this project, on this whole complex, almost 10 years, if not more. Ever since, Jack, we've just been here in Carver, in the planning board. And we're working on it. We're really adamant about trying to keep the numbers tight. I also talked to Bob Tinkham about it, and every time we do a project, we love to cut back on the gallons used per day. So that's what our goal is.
So you can't expand the field if need be?
Anything can be done. It takes, you know, it takes money. It takes time, but, you know...
And each building has its own septic system, so it could be expanded, but...
You just don't want to do that.
I just don't.
You wanted to stay with the existing.
Yeah, there's three of them on the property right now. There's three of them on the property plus a tight tank. So there's quite a bit involved in it, you know? The middle one is a 2,000-gallon tank in the middle one. And every single June or July, ABC Septic comes out, and we do a thorough cleanup, and I'm there with him to make sure that everything's clean, the deep box, lobby page also, the distribution box out in the field. And if it needs any kind of repairs, he does. He's on site, obviously. He takes care of all the septic that's been taken care of. And I have all documentation of it. If you need to see that. Pretty much up to date on that. And I'm real stickler about keeping it clean and see what's going on. Even some of the residents, they kind of like, you know, the guy with the pump is there, and I'm right there looking in the hole. Here we go. We're going to see what's going on and make, you know, address issues if there is any, and then we go from there. You know, really stickler about keeping that place clean.
Okay. Well, I think this is a good use of this, and I think that there's a need for it. And so with the restrictions, I think that we can set for this, and with the inspection of the septic system, I think it's, I think that can work. We just have to keep an eye on it as other businesses come in. That's all. But you're doing that anyway. Everybody's doing that, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, I know that we looked at this property quite a bit. Anthony, you've done quite a good job with the property and everything, and you're right. This is a good need in the town. It's been, he does a nice unit there and everything. He's got the parking. As you see in the Board of Health letters, you know, the septic is fine with it and stuff and the flows. So realistically, I think it's a good use for the property. I don't have any questions on it. I know it's, you know, the first time I've looked at it. We have public hearing and stuff, so I'm okay with it. I think it's good.
No, Anthony, show me the units. They're beautiful.
I have no issue. I agree with what Will and you just said.
Anybody else have any comments?
Same thing about the use of it.
All right, so, yeah, this is a public hearing, so anybody out there, and I don't see anybody out there, other than the few people taking, making the movie of this, and Anthony, but if there's anybody out there that would like to make any comments, please come forward. Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close a public hearing at this time, whereas we've done some pretty good in-depth on this property in the past couple of years, so I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to...
Good luck.
Thank you very much. I'm going to suggest you, if you want to approve this, you vote to approve the usual conditions plus the three conditions as outlined in the Board of Health letter of February 28.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for Anthony Alange at 40 North Main Street with the conditions that are specified with the Board of Health, including the third condition of some type of deed restriction with the Board of Health.
Yep.
They're not normal conditions.
Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, Anthony.
Nice talking to you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Keep plugging.
You have a good job down there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
You too.
All right, we'll go back to new business. We have a potential C is potential annual town meeting articles. We have signage, medical marijuana, master plan, and the North Carver landfill.
Yes, if you recall back in, I think it was November, we went through a whole list of potential zone changes. You kind of narrowed it down and asked me to draft them. I'd like to go through them, and the warrant deadline is March 11th, so this will be your last chance to put something on the warrant unless it's a special town meeting. First one, we've talked about quite a bit, that Rosemarie chaired the medical marijuana facility. I don't know if you want to do these one at a time, or it's up to you.
Sure. Well, we, yeah, probably that'd be the best way.
One at a time?
Yeah.
I don't know if Rosemarie has anything, but we beat this one up pretty well.
We did.
Oh, yeah, so Rosemarie already presented this at a couple of planning board meetings ago.
C, Rosemarie C, section C.
It should be on the C.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the only, only this comment that I, two comments I have. Number one, I think you guys did a great job on this.
Thank you.
I think being in a couple of different bylaws, I know how much work it takes, so I commend you and everybody who's helped draft this. The other thing is I have to Jack was, anything up to this date, do we know that from the state level might impact our bylaw?
No, we followed all the rules and regs of the state bylaw. This was vetted by town council, and the good news is that no one has filed a petition with the state Board of Health, Department of Public Health, for a facility in Carver. They're all in Plymouth. I think they have two in Plymouth, don't they?
One got approved.
One got approved.
So I think the only thing that we should look at, as, you know, I'm fully in favor of, you know, recommending this to the town and, you know, voting in favor for this as us as a vote. I think that we should also look right before town meeting, just check with the state if they had tweaked anything because of the new signals coming to fruition.
Yep.
If we need to, you know, change it on the floor, I think that'd be proven for us to do that at that time. But that's, I think this is a great document for us. I'd be in favor to make a motion after everybody else's comments to endorse and recommend a town meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a great document, and I do thank you and your committee for doing this. It's quite a, it's quite a bylaw, and I do recommend that we take this to town meeting. Anybody else have anything to say? Well done. Very good job.
No, and I haven't heard anything at the state level, but you'll check, Jack.
Yep.
The only negative thing that I heard was on television, where one of the dispensaries hired someone that had a police record for doing marijuana or something.
I did read that in the Globe, I think.
Yeah. It wasn't around. It wasn't around, yes.
Oops. Has nothing to do with our bylaw either.
No, it doesn't. But that's all, the only, that's the only negative thing that I have ever heard.
Chad, was there any other Plymouth County dispensaries? It mustn't be one...
The only one I remember reading was Plymouth. I know there was a bunch of Central West of Mass.
The Bud's down the Cape.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She had them too, I believe, yeah.
Well, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to recommend a town meeting... Well, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to recommend a town meeting the proposed medical marijuana facility.
Second.
Have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is this whole notion of internally lit, and when I went through Section 3570, which is the one that we deal with exceeding the dimensional requirements, this is, keep going backwards, there.
There it is.
It's hard to read, it's in red, but it's the darker. I just put, and to allow internally lit signs within HCB, VVA, GBB, these are all the business zones. And then the same criteria, and this really just takes it so, if appropriate, and it's mostly gas stations, I think, they don't have to go to you and have a hearing, and then they have to go to ZBA and have a hearing.
Does this, through you, Mr. Chair, does this address the LED lighting that we had talked, that we had just permitted? Because I tell you, the Shepherd's new sign that we ended up permitting, that LED down light on that is awesome. I really like it. I think it really looks nice at night. It's a classy-looking sign, so.
I think that within the special permit, though, you'd have the authority to talk about that, yeah.
Okay.
So this is, this'll take the issue to us, and it won't have to go to ZBA from now on, if this was a...
So this is gonna allow the internally lit?
Only by special permit. Only by special permit. I know we've had that quite a few times, come in front of us, people asking for internally lit. We've always steered them away from that to the goose-neck lighting, because it's more, fits more into our character, but I could see up near the, you know, the Route 44 and the industrial area, internally lit might be more appropriate.
This does not encourage it, I don't think. It just gives it one-stop shopping. You have, and 3571, signs are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Signs are not considered visual pollution. You have every right to say no, using those two criteria.
Now, where do we have internally lit signs?
The ZBA has permitted it at the New England Farms that's being built. They've, well, and then they have permitted it at the one that was before that, the SITCO.
Right.
They're the only one, only place that I know that they've approved. I may be wrong about that. Combi's never went to them for that, and NADU doesn't use it. I think that's it.
So this just kind of makes things more business-friendly, and lets us deal with it?
I like to think it gives it the opportunity to be business-friendly. I want to remind the public and you, that if it's not appropriate, you just say no. You can exceed the size, but not the internally lit. I don't know.
I think it's a good idea. Since we have to make decisions on all the other types of signs, why not do this too?
I can see it being used in the, up in the district area, up in the Whitworth property, as that gets built out. I can see it being used up there to get better visibility right off the highway there. I do like the halo soft glow that's on the Shaw's building and stuff like that. I think that's a nicer look, but maybe for some of the lower signs that are down low, it might be useful or not, I'm not really sure, but I could see it up that end. I can't see it in the center of town, you know? I couldn't see that. Would this also address the, somewhat to the message board signs that are at the schools and stuff like that? Because that's very useful.
Yep. Now, there are some requirements in your bylaw that exempt municipal uses.
Yeah, I got that. But I think that that's pretty useful as, you know, message signs being able to be changed like that. I do like the one that's at the school that, you know, tells a polka difference.
A lot of town halls are doing it too now, post-meetings.
So are the LED signs considered internally lit also? So this would come under that category?
Yeah, I really, really, really liked the Shepherd's sign. I thought that was a good move. I also really looked, it's a classy-looking sign.
I'll have to take a look at that.
I haven't looked at it.
No, I haven't seen it.
Go buy it every day.
Haven't seen it at night. Have to pay some attention to that.
Hopefully, if you're going there, you are seeing it, right?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the special permit to exceed dimensional requirements for the signs.
Have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is the North Carver landfill. I met several times with the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and now the interim town administrator, and now the town administrator, about trying to put solar panels on the North Carver landfill as a revenue producer. As you may recall, we did go out to bid in the fall. We did receive two bids, but the interim town administrator threw them out because of the technicality, or a technicality regarding how they're assessed in taxes proposed. So the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and town administrator asked that we re-advertise that, only for the electricity not to be bought by the town, because we're at our capacity, but to lease and obviously get taxes. One of the issues, also besides putting it out to bid, is that it's zoned Business General, and currently solar panels under the new bylaw are not allowed in the Business General District. And we'll chair that committee, and the rationale was, we didn't want to compete with the business land for taxes and uses and put solar panels there, because that certainly might happen. So I talked to town council about how, and because of all the sensitivity toward large-scale solar panels, I wanted to find the best way to be able to locate solar panel, and let me back up. And because of the very strict restrictions on setbacks under the bylaw, it's not a simple thing of just changing the zoning of the landfill to residential. It would then be allowed, but the restrictions on setbacks are so great that it would not be profitable, and no one would ever bid.
Mm-hmm.
So I had to find a way to allow the solar panels on that landfill without violating spot zoning, and also to protect all the other districts and all the other possibilities for large-scale zoning. So I talked to John Volrosen several times, and we zeroed in on creating a landfill overlay district. The overlay district would only be on the North Carver landfill. It would, all the requirements would fall under the solar bylaw that exists today. However, it would give you, and if you look at 4680, the planning board may reduce the setback screening requirements if the following criteria are met, and that the setbacks will not detrimentally impact the surrounding neighborhood, and to reduce setbacks while proper screening, including fencing, landscaping, and other screening techniques as conditioned by the planning board. I thought it was a simple way to get the job done, and still protect the integrity of the solar bylaw.
I think it's fine. It's very specific for the landfill. It still abides by all the solar bylaw, and plus it gives us a couple of other hooks, if you want to call it that. I don't have a problem with this.
Well, I think it's a good idea to put it on top of the landfill. I don't think there's any businesses that are going to be built on top of the landfill, to be sure, so. I think it's a good use.
Only way, the only way you're gonna see it is to fly over it.
Yeah.
I took a tour up there with you.
Really?
With you.
Oh, you did come up with one time?
Me, you, and I forget who else made that tour.
Michael Donald, maybe, the Vico ones?
But it was, it's up there.
Now, there are residents on Lincoln Drive, but those setback reductions, they won't need them there. There's enough room. It's the setbacks on North Main Street and the setbacks to Kelleher, which they don't care. Don't, will see it, so.
You won't even see it from the street?
No. Well, maybe if you really stretch your neck, maybe. I don't know. I don't think so.
That was pretty high. It was above the Kelleher building, the top of it.
Oh, gosh.
But it wouldn't necessarily be on the slope that faces the street.
It'll only be on the cap.
Just on the top, where you wouldn't see it.
There's a slight, a lesser slope going toward Cooper's Pond, but they wouldn't even use much of that, but it does slope a little that way.
That's Muddy Pond, right?
Muddy Pond, sorry. I did say Muddy Pond.
Yeah, I fished there a few times, years ago. All right, yeah, I think it's a good use, and I think it's good that we present this at town meeting to see how everybody else feels about it. So we had a motion?
I'll make that, send motion to recommend to town meeting.
Second.
You have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Next is Morrissey Boulevard. Right before Billy Howing retired, he reminded me that Morrissey Boulevard, which is right on Bates Pond, it was never accepted. Roads have been used. It's in good shape, he said. It just fell through the cracks, and this is one of the things he wanted done.
Make a motion to recommend.
Second.
Have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Last one is, as you know, I was approached by the Building Study Committee about the master plan, and I know I brought it up to you. I had a quote from the Southeastern Regional Economic Development District, SERPEN, for them to do your master plan for $64,600. They are exempt from 30B procurement, so I put an article in. Now, having said that, and having had a staff meeting today with the town administrator, the town's in pretty tough shape. Not in the big picture. The auditor has said that we're in excellent financial shape, but the budget's gonna be tight. I have not discussed this with anyone other than the Building Study Committee, and I know that they've discussed it with me in front of the selectmen about the need for this, so, and I know you wanted it, so I'll leave it at that.
And so they needed it for the, to look at the construction of the new buildings in town?
Well, they just saw it was lacking. They saw it was lacking and said, we can't, and remember, they're not just about the school. They're about all buildings and all the future of buildings, so they're thinking ahead with, God bless them, and they're saying, where's the blueprint? The blueprint is 13 years old.
I know that we had, we had tried to address parts of this. It's gotta be at least seven years ago, when Sheila...
All volunteers, yeah.
All volunteers working on parts of it. It's a necessity that we do it. We keep it up-to-date. It helps us a lot. After everybody makes their comments, I'd like to recommend this. To go to town meeting, we'll let the residents decide if they want to do this or not. It is a tool that's used not only by this board, but other boards, and also through the town, as clear as day is from the Building Study Committee talking to them, and it'll be a tool that can be used for years, years and years, so. Depends on what the taxpayers want to pay for or not, obviously, but I think it's our job to see that it's a tool that's a little bit old, quite a bit old, that needs to be worked on. And in the long run, it will save us money, but it's a decision that'll have to be made. I think it's our job to bring it forward, but that's my opinion.
I know that you were talking about maybe establishing some business areas in North Carver along 44, or we were talking, looking at land.
Oh, Spring Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, BDC's been working on that for a long time.
That would be part of this too?
Absolutely. Trying to maximize, you know, wherever we can have some type of commercial development for good tax dollars. That's what BDC does. Try to look at that end, but it would be essential that if we had a good working document that we could always refer back to. I know when I first got on the planning board, we used to a lot refer back to it, because it was fairly new back then. That was almost 10 years ago, so.
If I, and when I first got here, I got here in 2005, and we had a mentor of mine come and do a couple charrettes or public processes, participation processes, and he determined about 75% of that master plan was implemented, which is unprecedented. I mean, most of the time, if you get half done, my gosh.
Back then, it was what? It was only a five-year-old, six-year-old master plan?
Five years. Five years.
So that was pretty impressive on the, on the steps that the town had taken, you know, to implement what the study had said, and the monies that were spent back then to steer us in a certain direction with the townspeople wanting. So it's a tool that's very well-used, and this town's changed quite a bit.
And it probably will be as, as the economy gets better. Things will be, continue changing.
One other thing is, this quote does not include some of the public participation, but I think between the planning board and myself, and now that I see the town administrator in action, I think between us all, we can engage the public and then have SERPEN just digest all that information. I don't think we need, and if we do need someone, we can maybe find some private resources to help, but I don't think we need. I didn't want to push that number any farther up.
All right, any other comments? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend a town meeting the master plan for $64,600.
Second.
Now, how long will this master plan, if it was updated, how long would it be for?
You know, in the discipline, they say five years. Very few towns continually stay on there, but you're already at 13 years, so. And by the time this is done, it'll be 15 years. It takes a long time, a long time to put this together.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Jeff.
Going to other business. We have planning board notes. Does anybody have, or the planning board have any comments to make tonight?
I'm good tonight.
I'm good tonight.
Nothing at this time? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll go to planners' notes.
Just a couple things. I am writing two small grants, both to the Makepeace Foundation, one for the farmer's market, which I've done. We missed last year, but before that, I think three years in a row, we're doing a fourth. Interestingly enough, they want to, and I think it's a great idea, they want to expand and have a winters market, and they have approached the Frosty Dog about leasing probably twice a month on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning, I'm not sure which day, and have a winters market where they...
I like that. That's fantastic.
And they're becoming very popular, these winter markets, and it'll be much smaller in scale, but you got breads and milks and vegetables and all the kind of things that, you know, and crafts, I'm sure, but I think it's a great idea. So I put in some monies in this grant to offset some of the cost of that, besides all the entertainment. And then the other one I'm writing, and I'm actually meeting tomorrow night with the Crystal Eight on their community garden to help them. They're getting very close to... Lake on their community garden to help them. They're getting very close to starting that this spring, so. And lastly, like I said, the budget. I have my budget hearing Monday morning with the town administrator, and I assume the accountant, and he wanted me to bring the fee schedule. He has asked every department to look at their fees, to see if they're in, what kind of shape they are in with the surrounding communities, and whether there was any appropriateness to raising them. You have not raised your fees since 2008. Back then, you jacked them up pretty good, but I think the community, the surrounding communities probably have caught up to you by now. I know they have. I don't know if it's appropriate, but he has told us at the department head meeting that if it's appropriate, he'd like it enacted in this fiscal year. So I'll meet with him, and I'll come back to you, maybe next meeting or meeting after, see what that discussion's like, and then, then if it's what you want to do, then we'll start picking a way out of it and seeing what's appropriate. You know, it's a tough, you know, I also am your business director, you know, and some of you sit on other boards and commissions that advocate for business, so it's a tough, because that's who it hits. Most of them, these fees are part of doing business, but it's the small business guy, the mom-and-pop business guy that I worry about, not the big guys. That's all built in, and there's no real good way to differentiate, as you saw today with the sign, you know, that could have been Shaw's or the little guy. The signs, the bylaw's the same, so it's something that we've got to struggle with. That's it.
All right, thank you, Jack. All right, we have the approval of the minutes of February 18th, 2014.
No, we don't.
We don't? Well, so we'll have those maybe the next time we meet.
The key word is maybe. Kathy is extremely busy.
All right, well, that's good. You should always be busy.
You should have been there today.
Really busy. All right, we'll go on to correspondence then.
None.
No correspondence?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Are we off?